This is the regular working of San Diego National District Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. It is now 5:30. We will begin our meeting. Thank you. Terrence, would you please note that all board members are present? All right, let's stand to the flag, so please. Ready to begin.
Our president wishes to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of America indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to item A4. Approval of the agenda, direct motion to approve the agenda.
Aye.
I am received. Number seven, second, secondary. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the United's agenda. Is there any discussion before we move on? All right, seeing none, roll call, please, Terrence.
Mrs. Klevich.
Aye.
Mrs. Bashcock.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Abara.
Aye.
Mr. Olenberger.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero. All right, item A4, superintendent's reports and presentations. Number one, student representative of the House.
Hello. You guys are great for this. So, I don't have much to talk about today, which is wonderful, I think. We have been doing much this month, preparing for court finals and everything, making sure we get everything in order for December. But I do have some things to share with you. Our largest club on campus, Code to Connect, is hosting a food drive in partnership with People Helping People in preparation for the Thanksgiving holiday. It's a canned food drive, it's very wonderful. We also have toys for pop boxes being set up around campus in preparation for the holiday season. And we're getting a vinyl banner for our SUV section, so that can be more obvious for people coming to our games that we have going on because our winter sports season started yesterday. We have a boys' and a girls' wrestling coach. We also have boys' soccer starting up, we also have girls' soccer. We have boys' basketball, girls' basketball, girls' water polo, and cheer, all happening. And we'd love some support in the season, so that's all we share with you.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for our students? Thank you very much, students. Our superintendent's report.
Is that right here? So, I'm very excited to announce, this is our 125th year of the district. Starting in 1896. We will be having this celebration on December 7th. We will be opening up the pirate closet, which I know new, and people have not had necessarily an opportunity to come visit. So we welcome people to come out, and especially our alumni, we'd love to see there before 5:30. And then after, at 5:30, there will be a staff versus group varsity volleyball game. I heard this was very competitive last time we did this, so it'll be an exciting event. We hope that people will come out and celebrate with us, and we look forward to seeing everybody there. And yet, we'll be in the pirate closet, and we will also be celebrating the opening of Pirate Cafe. And view the renovation to our world of the states. Now, I'd like to invite up one of our alumni. We've had a pleasure to have a very nice conversation about how we support our alumni moving forward and recognize the great things that our students do once they've gone from our high school here. So, David James, why don't you please come up?
Sure. I graduated from San Diego in 1966, and my brother did graduate in 71, and another one in 73. My daughter, Sarah, is the 1985 high school student, and another son, Eric, in 1991, and my next son, James, in 2002. My mother is the president of the PTA Association Act, and that's in my home school, Southern School, over the middle years old. We live in January with the school, I spent a lot of time there. A group of five of us got together about a year and a half ago, and I sort of started a conversation a couple of years before that. We sat down, we put together the matrix of a distinguished student award program. Our goal here is to recognize those students that distinguish themselves after their high school careers. And we'll be taking applications from any interested person to begin this program. We'll also be creating a foundation for funding that will benefit any and all programs in the school. We just simply want our own little wings, so we put some plaques up and do some things as these students are recognized. We specifically did not call out alumni for a very good reason. I know at least one person, he was in my class in high school, he never graduated in 66. He went to Vietnam, re-upped, he didn't come back. So we knew it was a graduate. We've got another dozen or more veterans that pay the ultimate price, and we expect and hope that someday they are all honored and recognized as distinguished alumni for their sacrifice. Just as a little backdrop to this, I'm familiar with board a few people that I think will be nominated. Personally, myself, and I don't think any of the other people on the committee that we've constructed so far will be nominating anybody. We'll be assessing and finding out, making determinations as to who we think qualified. I think if we were nominating people, there's a homer aspect to that, who they want to get in with. But my brother Jay was talking to me about somebody that graduated the year before he did. And he played on that grade 69 from Maltinup on the San Diego championship, has definitely been doing a better year later. He went to UCSB to major in business, then went to MIT, got a master's and a bachelor degree, or master's and a doctorate degree at MIT, and then taught at MIT for, you know, 40 years, his name might float. I think that's a distinguished alum, student. My favorite is Amy Moore, who went to the Air Force Academy. James had, I saw James had a picture of Amy piloting a C-130, needing to be fueled over the San Luis Valley. And a few years ago, which was her assignment, her job was to carry the presidential limousine and the SUVs from the Secret Service to the next destination. I've got a, a lot of this is nice to honor an individual student, but I've got a funny feeling when you start putting plaques on the wall and show what some people did. Some students are going to see that and go, I want to do that. There are some athletes that would never be on the wall of honor because they never fulfilled the requirements of graduation, but I know two people had outstanding major in baseball careers, Brian Nelson and Ed Fitzgerald. And then I know a couple of football players that played in the NFL. One of them was somebody that quarterbacked here, I played football here. He went on and played five years in the NFL, and in the last year that he was playing, he started three games for Green Bay Packers. Not earth shattering, but that's out of the ordinary, it's different. I know somebody that hurt, somebody that participated in an animated movie and won an Oscar. And then our brother Doug was talking about somebody that graduated in 73 when he did. She's gone on and had 12 or 15 books on the year of time's bestseller list. And I was jazzed when I found out we had something like that, so. We'll find out, we hope that there's plenty of people in the community that'll supply us with other names. But we have seven categories, we have a five-person committee. We decided that we wanted all to have a staff member and a student. So we have seven people reviewing these nominations and applications. And we haven't put together all the hardship. We don't know exactly what our format or our look would be for plaques, or a picture, or whatever, but we'll get through that. And then I'm working with, I haven't really gotten to the point where I had a local attorney was going to put a whole foundation here for the high school. Retired now, and he's not, he's, I got replaced. But we'll get that off the ground. We simply want to be able to have a few dollars on a ledger sheet when people donate. And if we have a 501(c)(3) or a charitable foundation, those donations are much more worth it. We'll write a check when we know they have access. That's pretty much our program. Anybody have a question?
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. So, next up is a quick construction update. This is a render of what our new classroom, our culinary classroom, will look like in about a year and a half. So we're moving, we're very excited, we had our walk through a month ago. Construction proposal over in front of the board tonight. So we'll be renovating our kitchen classroom, as well as the kitchen, to upgrade it down to standard yard equipment. It'll be a standard yard facility. Along with construction, this is more of a heads up. We're going to be back in construction zone in this area at the campus, starting in December, right after our 125th celebration. And so we'll be fencing off the area, and we will have fencing going up around some of the parking lot, rootways as well. So we'll be maintaining that. Our community, and we just asked the group to be fair with us, so we can get to that construction process once again. But the end result will be worth the wait. And then finally, I'd like to recognize, I had the opportunity to attend a very nice event hosted by the San Barbara County Education Office. And TJ Harrow, very well is recognized as distinguishing educator of the year. So it was a great event, great opportunity to celebrate TJ and all the wonderful things he's done here as a new teacher. And I'd also like to make this opportunity to just acknowledge all the amazing effort that our teachers and our staff have done this year in keeping our schools open and serving our students. It was a great opportunity to have, I've got a question.
And who else? All right, principal of the partnership.
Okay, so, thank you for the opportunity to cover some data and academics. And looking, I did talk to board last year a couple of times about data, but I know we have some new persons. We did some proposal, or some, some information, so I just wanted to kind of give a brief information on the California Dashboard and how we're measured by in the state and expected to perform. And then I also wanted to cover some of the data that we have. It is limited, you will see because of the pandemic and being able to assess. And I'll let you know where we're headed. So, that's the primary zone. Okay, so the first slide is, I'd like to show you, with the California Dashboard. It measures the school, and you'll see off to the right, you know, by five levels. Red being the lowest, orange, yellow, green, blue is the highest. And then it measures us in different categories. They try to look at not only academic performance, but college career readiness and, and, you know, involvement, school involvement, graduation rate. So, these were the 2019, this is the 2019 data. So, we have suspension rate to find out, you know, how are they, you know, how are they performing, you know, mentally and healthy and those types of things, their behaviors. English learning progress, which at that point had no color to the data, which I'll review with the board over time. Graduation rate, college career readiness, and then the assessments.
Just to clarify, the suspension rate in red or orange is actually a good thing, right?
No.
Oh.
Fortunately not. And I did, I talked about some samples that I actually given the board. It's about how they kind of determine the numbers and the colors, but it is different for each of these. So, I put together just a little color chart, so just, it's easier to kind of glance, and I give you a little number if you can't see the color, it doesn't make any sense in the color frames. But it also knows there's a lot of white areas, and that's because we have a population that's less than 10 or 30, depending on the population, they do not rank us in it because it would be, Harry revealing this to which students those might be. So they actually don't give us data on that because it kind of gives up who those people are. We have to have a certain population before it actually provides it, provides us. So you'll see SED, for those who don't, is socio-economically disadvantaged or low income. SWD is special ed students. And then Hispanic and Hawaii, you might see special ed students in suspension rates, but not in graduation rates. It's because you're talking about, when you're talking about suspension rates, you're going to see more numbers because it covers all grade level, from ninth and 12th. And then all the other ones are specific to a grade level. So CASP assessments are only juniors, so the population becomes smaller of those areas. So you have less students that are just juniors that might be special ed. You might have less than 30 students that are special ed and juniors. So you might have 100 between all four grade levels. Same thing with graduation rates, senior class only is measured, and college career senior class only measured. And then, so you'll see from 18 to 19, you know, there's, in each of those, you'll see, like in English, we started out in, a little higher than in 2019. Math, kind of the same shift, a little lower in the scoring range. Graduation rate went up a bit between 18 and 19 suspension rates. For English learners did well, but for the rest of the population, had some across the board and some down movement and some up. And then college career did very well, obviously our, our SED population went down just a slight bit. But the numbers are good, 80% being college career ready is actually the number on the top, we'll go down that too. So, college career ready, when we talk about college career ready, they're trying to measure students overall. Not every student is going to go to a four-year university. So we're trying to give them opportunities for those who are kind of going to careers. And that's why CTE is very important for us, to look at the CTE programs and get those set. So this is how students become college career ready, and they can do it in a number of ways. So there's eight, there's eight ways of doing it, it's kind of more when you have seven, eight, they give you a couple of other options. So they can either pass the two smarter bouts, the ELA or the math, you know, and a three-year better. They could pass two AP exams with a three-year better. We don't have AP, so that would be for our school. But the college number four is college credit courses, and we do have dual enrollment. So if they take dual enrollment, they can be, and pass it with a C minus or above, they can be college career ready. If they earn a state sealed by literacy, which means that they have passed, they have shown attainment of their, of another language. For us, that would probably be taking the AP Spanish exam and passing it. And then they have to do well on the ELA, the English CASP, and a three or higher to earn that. Or, we don't have a dual-term program here, so that would, number six wouldn't apply to us. And number seven and eight, it will, you know, so those give opportunities for, like, for a special ed student. It's not necessarily academically inclined to pass a dual, well, I'll talk about dual enrollment, but they're not necessarily academically inclined to pass the three-year better on to assess, you know, to, to the STAR assessments or, you know, meet some of these other criteria, but they can do a CTE pathway. And if they do a CTE pathway, their college, college for technical pathways, like Iowa or something, you know, restaurant or something like that, they could be, but they also have to do one of the other things below it, which is either get a three or higher on the ELA and a two or higher CASP, or vice versa. Or, they could get a C minus or higher in a dual enrollment. So of course, special ed kids that might struggle in assessments, they could potentially complete a pathway, you know, a career pathway, and then take some sort of dual enrollment. You know, that might qualify for them, and we have to find out what those ones, so that they might have a niche in or do something with it. Still get them to be, so we could actually at some point be 100% college career ready. And so, and then by finding those pathways, it helps to speed that way. And then the last one is the eight, by these A through Gs, ten meeting one of the other four bullets below. So you can see that's a little bit of all those, but they have to, so A through G is not like the biggest thing. Every kid's not going to go to a four-year college. So, to look for 100% A through G would be, you know, hard for some kids. But to be college career ready is what they're kind of looking for. I mean, we're always going to try to make them A through G, and get them prepared, give them opportunity. But for some, at least they can earn that, that college career readiness indicator. So we can do that a bit.
Michelle.
Yeah.
Before you mention dual enrollment, a student does take a dual enrollment course at Hampton University College, not on campus here. Is that, does that credit apply to their grade here at school?
Yes, so, so it's concurrent enrollment. It's when it's, when it's actually, so basically, if it's on campus, it's considered concurrent enrollment. If it's off campus, it's dual enrollment. The state still refers to it as dual enrollment, no matter which way, on campus, off campus, whatever. As long as the student takes it and brings us the transcript and we put it in our system, it is considered, it would be an attainment of passing a dual enrollment.
Okay.
And we just have to make sure it gets into our system correctly. And then there's going to be some discussion about the credit. We've had some discussion about credits on that, and that's a whole different topic that we're going to have to address before the end of this school year. It says how they, you know, how those are counted, you know, because they can be counted differently. We are cutting them a little differently, but that's a whole other conversation. But I am a big fan of dual enrollment, I think that that is, my daughter herself took dual enrollment courses and graduated the end of her, end of her junior year because she wanted to graduate early in her college life. She was just a nice little whatever kind of thing. So I think every kid has, it's not a, a square type of thing in our college. So we have to modify for them. Okay, so the next one is specifically the data for the dashboard. You saw the dashboard, the colors for the English and the math assessments. So this gives you just the raw scores. So this shows you the three years, 17, 18, 19, just as a note, a good note, in 2020, these assessments were not given or they were given, and they just never put them up on the dashboard because not all schools had opportunity to complete them, so they didn't do, give us that data, which I know our English department is really zapped up because they felt they were doing really well, and had given them, but never got the feedback. So that was unfortunate for San Luis. And then this past year, in 2021, we did not give it. Again, with the hybrid, it was difficult, some schools quite had trouble through the distance. We use, every school kind of had a local at least assessment, and we utilized the STAR assessment, which I'll talk more about.
Are we going to the shooting?
Yes, yes, so we are, we are, we are accepting that.
I think this is what, two, three, four years old now?
We are going to have two, yeah, we're going to have two years.
Former principal, former superintendent.
Right, everything's changed. And, and you know what, and I would say that when we get the data this time, it's going to be like starting all over the benchmark. Because kids right now, having a year of being, you know, many of them being called at different levels of supports at home, or different levels of self-learning, you know, some do very well learning on their own, some do not. And, and so we are noticing this year such a draw range in every single classroom from kids that just struggled the last year, or just pretty much said, I didn't do a whole lot, you know, so. And did not get the attainment, you know, the information to kids that just are natural learners and just, you know, still thrive in that environment. So, it's a challenge for our teachers, and I feel for everyone on the classroom there, working hard to try to work with that gap that's existing in their classrooms right now.
So our math, for all students, our math, I mean, didn't exceed in 2019, was 38%?
Yes, yes. So I would like to take your attention, sorry if everybody in this audience, you don't have this, but I did give this to the board members, just a bit of, just a bit of reference. So you'll see these two pieces of paper, the one with the color chart, you'll see that. And this is how they determine the colors. They don't base it off this data, I should have said this at the last, during the last slide, to reference back to how they determine the colors. So, if you, if you basically look at the color chart first, you're going to see like the ELA at the top. It gives you two ways of being put into a color frame. On the left, it talks about, you know, 75 points or higher. And what they're talking about is above standard. And they, they don't tell you what standard is, they're just saying 75 because they're trying not to equate it to whatever. So if you're 75 points above standard and you're maintaining it, you're still blue. Or you're increasing, you're still blue. But if you're decreasing by a certain amount of points, it will take you down to green. However, if we're only at zero, that's the right of standard versus zero points below the middle there, or yellow. But if we're increasing that here, then it gives us green. So this is, this is just a bird's eye view, just for your references. How, how do they figure out, and then this other piece that comes with it does kind of show you how it does explain it a little bit better about those scores. I see math on here, on the start of the bottom, it'll say on the left, from the top, it'll say 25 points or above higher in the current, in the current year, above standard. And what does that mean, and it just kind of explains, you know, more or less, and I don't have the information in that book. So if you're interested to look at that.
Good, I, I appreciate you talking, and for miles an hour, these meetings can go on forever, and some of the stuff we drive. No, 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 please, continue. But, I just to go back to that, I'm sorry, the math and the English scores.
Yeah.
On the previous page. Math, meet or exceed, met or exceeded, in 2019, 38%, 18, 46%, and 2017, 49%?
No, okay, so these are raw scores, that's why you have to differentiate between, so the raw scores are actually posted on the sort of balance website, which is, does not connect directly to the dashboard. So dashboard, these scores are just the raw scores, but they.
Meaning they're not compared to?
They are not compared, so these scores up here that you see, if you go back to the other slide, those, there's no correlation between the ranking, the red, blue, green, direct correlation between the two. So the state, when the state says you fall in green, they're basing it off of two things. How far below, how far other below you are based on a standard score they do not give you. And whether you improved or decreased from the year before.
So, I think regardless of relative to the standard, right, just looking at the raw. Like, what explains the deterioration?
I asked the same question, I wasn't clear that year, but I did, they did, you know, they did say that they had tweaked some things into the next year and felt that they were going to do much better. I think math had some struggles because they were changing into the integrated and had shifted from the traditional Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. Tried to do the integrated when they shifted to the Common Core, but then have decided that that just wasn't working for them. And have now, as of this year, shifted back to traditional Algebra I, Algebra II, or, sorry, Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. So there, and, and I've also brought in Solution Free, DLC support, that is a math, he's very strong in math, and really helping them dig deep into the essential standards and they're, and looking at their data, because that's a real big thing, and that's in near the end of the slide, the things that we're working towards. And they are doing an honorable job.
So, I'm sorry, one last question on that one. So like, do, do you have access to the raw data of other comparable districts? And have they seen the same sort of decline?
Yeah, so I did write down on here, so state, just for you to know, the state ELA, so if I put state up against what's up there for 18, 2018, the state level in English was 49.88. And the state level performance for all students in 2019 was 51.1. So that's, that's the state average. For mathematics, the state average for mathematics in 2018 was 38.65. And the raw, and the, and the percentage for 2019, we were ju, that's a little more just below, which was 39.73. So that's when they really were realizing that integrated was working for them, so they began to.
So, the trend, if you will, in the English is consistent with the state trend, albeit at a higher level. But in math, it was not a comparable trend?
Are you talking, so you're talking about the trend, is it, and obviously.
I'm talking about the deterioration in math from 49 to 38. And what you just described for 2018 and 2019 for math was that, I think, I think I heard that our math score was lower than the average?
Let me, let me explain again. So English went in 2018 and statewide from 49.8 to 51.1 in 2019. So they actually increased by about, not even a whole percent, or no, 200%, just over a percent. So statewide, they went up a little over a percent from 18 to 19. We actually decreased by almost 10.
And then math?
In math, they, state went up, 38.6 to 39.7. So we went down, so we went down apparently both in math and English. Math, not as dramatically, but still went down significantly, you know, significantly enough. And we have no data beyond that to really compare. We did give the math, the STAR math assessment to just the juniors this past year. And I don't have it because I don't really have any comparisons, it's just a benchmark number. We are going to give it again to all students, so I would like to be able to do that with a comparison. And we just finished giving the STAR reading to all, so we have no reading scores on our kids. So I brought in the STAR reading as well, so they just. So they just, we're able to deliver that this past week, so we haven't compiled everything. They have about forty more students to go to.
As, Michelle, as, as principal of the school, let's just look at the math, two thousand nineteen, thirty-eight point five. What would you like to see? As, what would you think would be a goal that the school could achieve?
I, I believe this school can achieve probably in the sixty to even low seventies. I think that there, we have the good students here that can do that. I think our, I think our English should be easily in the eighty, eighty-five.
So we're failing miserably right now, or back then, and probably even worse now.
I think it's going to take a while from a longer for math to catch up because it is a process. And it's a process of retraining. And, and, and the other thing that we're having a lot of conversations in PLC is about how do we assess students? Are we assessing them on compliance of knowledge? And, and actually, in the board policy, it does say that we have to assess them on his knowledge. And it's, it's a very dicey situation for, for families and students to accept because this is, you know, I had a student come to me and said, I just scored some, well, I'm getting like a CD in English, but I do all my homework, but I'm not doing all my classes. So what does that tell you? You know, because we can't, you know, we don't know how you're doing your homework. We don't know if you're learning your homework. And it really should be on assessments, but then it should be on assessments based on the standards. So if a student's not doing well at one point, what are we doing for that student to help them gain that content? And at what point do they have to measure if does that task that helped them learn, would have helped them learn it back in September? If they can show that they mastered it in October and November, then why is that task still worth this part of the degree?
So once again, I mean, if, if my child came only thirty-eight point five percent math score. You're not getting, you probably got your name right at the top of the page to get that. What, what do we need to do to get there? Just generally speaking.
Yeah.
Because I'm sorry, because we're going to be doing goal setting meeting next month. And we need to start setting goals because this is yours.
And the thing is, I would jump and say that we should reach seventy percent next year.
Right, right.
But it just can't. It's just not going to happen. It's just not, it's not reasonable to set something that.
And to clarify that point on, like, we should be able to do this. Does that mean we should be able to, based on the resources that we have? Or the student talents that we have? Or that, that, that's actually a goal? Like, you see the differential?
I think, I think there's a combination of the things you said. I think that, I think with our student population, we should be able to achieve that. I think with the staff who have, that have the credentials to be able to do this and have the passion to do it. I think it's providing them with the tools and the resources and professional development to be able to. And I, I feel that that's been what's missing.
I, yeah, I think it has. I, my question, I think, deserves a well thought out answer, so I don't want to put you on the spot. If you don't mind thinking it over and getting it back, just emailing us. And then, so when we meet with Andrew next month, we've heard from you. Give us an idea of where, how we can start getting.
I got him in there, but I won't tell you your race time, so I'll be out today. I think that it's here. No problem, I'm sorry, I'll try to go a little faster. Advanced placement, a lot of people really like to see data about advanced placement AP scores, and a lot of people like to see a lot of coverage about SAT scores. We also have to continue to remember that that's a, that's a certain population. Not all kids take SAT, not all kids take AP exams. So it's great data they have, that sees that we're doing, you know, pretty well. And I, I don't have safety, which now my subject, so I really didn't put that in there. But I certainly have some questions about that. I just wanted to make sure you saw that, it's in there. And last year, again, most of them took it from home on computer, so it's really tough to compare that data. So I don't think what happened last year is even as terrible as what happened here before. Because even the year before, we were kind of still a little differently aligned. Okay, so that's important. So this here, grade data, good thing about grade data is that it has improved from last year. If you look at the grade data, it's up there. So, so you'll see our overall DNF, the total number of DNFs, the number of students earning them last year in twenty twenty were three hundred and forty-six and four hundred and twenty-nine. But you have to also mind you that maybe they only have one now. Because if you look at the big number, the number of DNFs that were given last year, that's just fine. Let me, let me just remind you, this is the quarter grade, it's not a semester grade. So don't let, I'm only focusing on the information I have right now. And the thousand forty-six students at first quarter were earning, you know, earning a D or an A. And then when you get to this year, six hundred and ninety-five, we're earning a D or an A. And I can tell you that we're, we're working on it because they really kind of get adjusted to be after class. They have to be readjusted to turn against like this and, and reprinted to things. So there's a lot of factors in that. And we're having lots of conversations about how to, how to improve that and, and we're to get grace. And we're not to because we have to really, you know, adapt that back into classroom environment. Question on that?
Yeah, given that we were, that this school was differentiated in terms of implementing a hybrid last year where other schools in the county voted to stay at home. Like you would, you would expect to see a, an improvement here. Is, is our kids transitioned to full-time? Is there data to support that our kids transitioning from hybrid to full-time is smoother than the other schools within the county that didn't come back until this year?
I would tell you that this data is, really if you look at the first, the thousand forty-six Ds and Fs, that was still fully for distance learning. Because first quarter, we were fully distance learning. As opposed to this year, they were fully in-person. So I, I think I would need more data, as again, through the year, for us to see. Because as, you know, so into the second quarter of first semester, then we started having some hybrid, you know, kids showing up. And by the time we got to February-ish, is when we actually were able to sit them three feet apart. And we were able to get more, more days a week instead of just two days a week. We got it through four days a week. And I can tell you, I was thankful of the board, I was scared and nervous about it when it actually happened. Like, how do we fit it in the room? How do we see them? How do I get teachers to, like, you know, because they're nervous and scared too. But I just, you know, once we did it, the first, when we got the first hybrid going, and, sorry, I'm trying to remember. I have some stuff sticks in my head. And that, and that from that point on, when, I was so excited when they said they'd move three feet apart. We're doing it the first week. So it was really exciting to do it and very happy we did it. And it definitely made it much more pleasant. And I do think that it made a difference at least for the kids that work here. And for the, for the other fifty percent that were home, it's still, you know. Now, can I run data on which ones stayed home or which ones didn't? Potentially. Do something else, too. Any other questions on that? All right, so the next one is just A through G. So you have to be careful, you know, you say you can do data, your A through G performance. But again, you know, if you go look, because all this data that I'm getting you, it's all somewhere on the website. So you're on the dashboard, on Data Quest, it's on, you know, all of this. Except for like the details for, you know, the AP scores, that, that stuff. You have our, I have this list of, that stuff, of course. If this is data, you can find, but you have to be, if this is data, it could be G in the quest. It says students need, you know, students needing CSU UCU requirements. They're the same for everybody, they're no different. Our school has same UCU requirements, CSU UCU requirements than any other school. So you might have your graduation requirements. But I did, I did include on there to show you the state versus where we're at. So it does give you a home respite, so I was able to grab that and put it on there. So you can see where we are compared to, and I wrote it down by white Hispanic. And, and there are things that we can do to make sure that the A through G, that courses that they're taking are A through G.
But so saying students needing requirements, is it actually contingent upon students participating in those classes that need the requirements?
Yes, yes. The goal is to always put them into A through G courses and have them pass A through G courses. If a student is not being, doing well or fails an A through G course, there's two options, is to retake the A through G course and try to maintain A through G, or they could take a recovery course, which is a non-A through G. And that's usually where you're going to, and sometimes you'll have students with disabilities or someone that have those issues as well.
Yeah, this seems to be, I don't know, I think, not everyone's going to go to college. Not everyone's going to go to UC or Cal State School. I, I brought it up in a previous board meeting, according to what our class superintendent told me, our average score in the ACT the last three years was eleven-ten. UCSD, last year, their minimum score was twelve-sixty. At Cal, probably twelve-sixty minimum score, sorry if I'm keeping you.
Yeah, no problem.
We're not getting in there. We're not getting in there. And I know not everyone's going to go on to a four-year university. But just looking in twenty twenty, the Hispanic kids, twenty-one percent. Okay, but two years prior, forty-four percent. I think we're, it looks like we're absolutely failing to give them, putting them in a position to succeed when they leave here. Unless twenty-two percent over two years decide not to take classes in A through G anymore, and which I'm sure is not the case.
Right, there are other things that we can do, and I'm looking at those. Putting kids into, so like, we have a Math One Hundred class, which is an A through G. So instead of putting kids coming in, A through G, you know, putting, bringing kids in their freshman level because they're not, they don't meet a certain standard or a number in math or have a certain grade when they come to us from theater schools. Instead of putting in a Math One Hundred, you put an Algebra with the rest of the kids and you provide them a support class. Some staff are concerned that if we do that, then you're taking away an elective opportunity. But the fact is that we want them to be ready in A through G. And we want them to be able to, because the evidence is, is don't put a kid in this lower class. You know, teaching these lower doesn't help me achieve the same. The evidence shows that if I put you in the class with the rest of the students and I provide you with support, whether it's English with a reading support or whether it's math with a math support, then that helps you be able to reach that bar and get you to the other students higher.
So is there an effort to work with theater schools to ensure that the students coming to the high school are coming with more preparation? And the, go ahead.
Go ahead, finish the question. Well, no, I mean, that's, that was my goal when I came in, is definitely have those conversations and, and work out something with superintendents and the other schools. And then have, you know, like a math, you know, have, you know, like a math person from each site get together and figure out, you know, where the kids are, what they can do to come in and be prepared for our Algebra One class. So that's good information. What is each school doing? Knowing what each school is doing, kind of same thing with, you know, English, science, you know, that they can do those things. So that's important for us to build those relationships.
Yeah.
Where I was at before, I had five, six theater schools, and then we had, we had articulation meetings three times a year.
Imagine if we were one school this year?
This is certainly, this certainly important, this kind of this pipeline. The pipeline from the big schools to the high school, the importance we are, the alternative for our community as a high school. And the other one is, I'm wondering if there are additional resources added to provide more one-on-one, perhaps, or smaller numbers, contact with either teachers or folks that are helping with, I'd love to, or some, some access of inability for additional help during an after-school?
Yes, so ideally, you want to build your interventions during school day. That's when we have them, that's when we capture them. Some, some have to go after school, some have to hit bus, can't come back, you have transportation issues. So building it in school day is the ideal situation. We are currently talking about bill schedule, and I'm like trying to find out if seventh period could end up being intervention core period. And, and, and maybe have, what we have to do though is reduce the freshman requirement down to sixty credits instead of seventy. And just make that available to all, because then making interventions available to all the upperclassmen and not the freshmen, it makes it challenging. So seventh period could be intervention credit recovery, potentially, and athletic period. So you can be in athletics seventh period, you can go into do recovery, you can go into interventions. And let's say you're failing math or English, well, guess what? You don't get to go to sports, you get to go to interventions. Or if you don't get to go home, you get to stay longer. So if it's embedded there and the rest is run after seventh period, then there's ways to incentivize kids to, to do more or provide them that, you know, opportunity. So it's a discussion we're having, how do we embed it in this, in our spell schedule? And we're going to potentially, I don't know, we're going to change our schedule, we're waiting or not, we're waiting. But we're, we're definitely looking at it right now. Okay, so next steps, data-driven collaboration teams working in the process. We already had math started last, last May with the, with the Solution Tree trainer, really helping them to outline and line up their curriculum. He is, he is coming in, actually, he, he got stuck in Texas on the Southwest flight when we had our credential belt today, so he actually sent this one to you that day. But he is coming in on the sixth again, so we all want to kind of be our person come on by on December sixth at EDA. So we're getting, you know, we're going to, we're going to, so, anyway. So then, so, and then we also have one other one, and he was, and he's coming in, he works for us and stuff. And on their PLCs, and PLCs are really about setting norms, identifying their essential learnings. Common course assessments, their common assessments, looking at how do we have our data year to year, semester to semester. So in the classroom, how are they, generally looking at their data and identifying growth? And where they, where they adjust their instruction. And then SMART goals, they have, everybody needs to have a goal of something to attain. And a SMART goal they have to measure, you know, and, and they focus on that as teams. So they're all developing these parts of their, of their departments or their personal. Renaissance, when we spoke about STAR reading and STAR math, we purchased that last year. We utilized it for our, to meet the state requirement of assessment last spring. We only have that data for juniors for last year, this year, and we get it to all students. The reading scores, we should be getting, we just got it, you know, starting with the Wi-Fi right now. It was, you know, they have the time to do it on their devices. But we did get through it this week, you know, and now we'll still take the STAR reading assessment. So we'll have actually reading scores, all of our students, that's really awesome. And then they plan around that, we're going to do it again next semester. So we have a semester-by-semester comparison. Hopefully, we'll actually be doing that three times a year in the future. Math, the STAR math, and this is, I'm going to kind of jump down where it says PSAT, question mark. Because my goal was to offer PSAT to all students when they operate in mid-October and just have it a day of assessment. But we kind of put a pause on that. Number one, we already purchased math for the, for the assessment last year. We thought, well, it's computer adapted. We could really like home them down exactly where they're at. Let's see how that works out for us, because we have more control of it. It's our data, it's not their data, and then they're giving it to us. And, and it's also a tool that they thought was very worthy of giving them a shot. And we're going to give it to all kids. So we can really, and, and it actually helps with interventions. And, you know, there's a lot of alignment with what our IXL is doing. So we have a program in the, in the math class that aligns very well with. So we're looking at that, not saying that we're not going to do PSAT at this point, we're still looking at it. But the other reason that we paused on it is because they did pause the SAT for colleges. So SAT is no longer required to give to colleges. So we were just kind of like, well, what's going to happen now? So why do I want to invest in PSAT if something's going to happen strange there? So our concern is not to jump on it right away. So we'll kind of get a feeling as to how PSAT is going to be in the future and requirements of SAT.
I'm sorry, SATs are not required at all schools anymore?
Colleges aren't. Nope, they paused it.
They paused it for UC schools.
Yeah, I don't know about all the.
And not Cal State, and certainly not private, and not, not any other east coast.
Cal State as well, all California, yeah, universities. And I thought it was, it was, I would have to take.
Well, my two daughters just went through this, last year. And it was, they, UC was the only one who danced it. So unless, they've all jumped on, but I've been, private schools back then certainly did not last year.
Right, and that's, and that's good, you know, because then if the students are wanting to go to private schools, they can still take the assessment. You know, so, and then we can look away to providing that. But if it's not a majority of our students, it just depends on whether we think it's reasonable to invest in that for our kids, which one's going to give us the best data. So I have to look at one, and what's going to give us the best resources for our kids. So it's a pause, special summer, so, so definitely thinking about it. And then Smart Abounds interim assessments are available online. So they, you know, get kids familiar with the assessments and prepare for those when they come in the spring. So those, I'd ask the English and math departments to invent those in their, in their classrooms. So they get a feel for it. And then the interventions and credit recovery, which kind of mentioned math and English currently because we're extended learning grant. We have two teachers on campus that are really supporting the students and pulling out the students that are failing and working with their departments to do that. And I think that's it for the assessment information. So I go on to career technical because it was in the, it was in the data and it's really good right now. So I want to let you know where we're at and where we're kind of headed. So what we have right now is we have five complete pathways, mechanics, animal science, graphic design, which is also in, AKA yearbook, food services and hospitality, and then engineering design, which is also graphic. So those are all complete means. So to be a completer, they have to, they, some can have an intro or not have an intro, but all of ours have an intro class. They have to have at minimum a motion trainer, caster. And so all those courses need to qualify and have a credential teacher. This is our big challenge right now is the credentialing, because it won't count if the teacher's not CTE certified. And so if you look over to the next one where it says arts, media, entertainment, theater. So theater, we have a fantastic theater teacher, but if he doesn't get a CTE credential, then it doesn't count. So we're working, I, I was actually at a state meeting last, before last, and having a discussion, because I'm a, I'm a council, state council for. with, because I'm a, I'm a council, state council for secondary ed for the state, and I was at that meeting in San Francisco, having a discussion that we're all having this challenge right now. How do we do this with teachers that are phenomenal teachers that have been doing something forever and now you're sending them down with a CTE credential but they're not funding it or making it or giving them something for it? So it's a challenge. Same thing with arts, media, entertainment, we have a fantastic art teacher and we have to also make sure that we put that, the alignment in there for that one as well. And then systems diagnostics and service repair, that's only pending. So we got our Dr. Sargent, fantastic, he's really just, he's got a passion for this, doing a great job. We are building that as we go right now. He is finishing his CTE credential, which is great. But he, we also, so this year we have intro class, this year we started Auto 100, which is a dual enrollment with Alhandcock. And currently, right now, we're working on two, so the 100 is a, is a concentrator and we're working on two capstones right now. There's two, one in break in alignment and one in, he has this fantastic equipment out there, but he's like, we can do this. So those will be also dual enrollment, we'll flip, we'll flip-flop those year by year, and those will actually be our capstones starting next year. So that's where those are. And then incomplete pathways is our O H, we don't have all three levels. Agro-science, we don't have all three levels. And patient care, which is oncology, we don't have all three levels, but it's something that we're looking at, just to see, is it easy kids or do we want to make them pathways or not? I just want to mention one more thing while we're on CTE, is that we're also been having communications with Alhandcock, because they have, we talked about what programs they have there that might work well for us and we can collaborate with them and be able to build a relationship that they can earn certifications. One of them, they have considered or are recommending is the business one. I like business, I built a business pathway in Hanford and it's right, it's the only one in their district that's thriving still, business finance. And the nice thing about business finance, and I'm going to put an old plug, but it may not happen, we'll see what happens, but it is, it is great, because I had, I had a girl that came doing, I want to have a pathway, I want to be a hairdresser. And I'm like, well, don't you want to own your own hairdressers alone one day? So business is great for you. So very versatile, can be used in a, for a larger variety of students. And it's just, I think it's good and not stuck, but there are a lot of things that we can be potentially doing, a small high school, but we have to build those relationships. Okay, last one. So campus culture, I know we talked about this, where we're at right now, we already have a student center that we created, had a discussion with them about campus culture, make you proud of feeling that there are some things that we do need to address. Identify what those are specifically is a challenge. So serving kids out on campus, you can kind of see it, you don't, you can be like in a classroom, something that happens, you just don't see it, you don't understand the student, let go and talk. So the way we do it is we have to gather data, number one, how many of our students are involved? And we have most of the data in, not quite yet, ASB and working with our, our club advisors to give us the list of all the students in their class, so we can get that data into areas. We know which kids are playing sports, we just don't know which kids are in FFA, which kids are in the GSN, or which are in the young Democrats, or the young, young public kids, or whichever's, I just would, you know, like to know which kids are involved and then we can look at the demographics of those kids. And then a student survey, which is almost done, so we put I then with Claudia Pena and what now with the PHD, and we came up with, we found some resources and we're putting together the survey right now and then asked quite a few questions about how they feel, what do they see, you know, their demographic and things like that, so we can get an idea and for them to even give us ideas of how they can feel either safer or more inclusive or, so the kids will be able to hopefully give us some ideas of how we move forward. And hopefully that will go out before the end of the semester, so we can really take some time to dive into it and figure out how we can call the attention. So, any other questions?
Questions, anybody? All right, thank you, Michelle.
Samantha.
Have the answers.
Thirty yes.
So I'm going to go home. All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to IHC, which is public comments. I just wanted to clarify that we have several speakers who would like to speak regarding the item. Item I four, which is the vaccine mandate. And what I'd like to do is move it up under public comments right now, rather than wait till later on in the agenda, okay? What I'd also like to mention is that we have several, several speakers on the topic of vaccine mandate, okay? For the sake of time, I would appreciate it, and the board would appreciate it, if somebody has said basically what you are planning to say, what have you, the center, that you take it as someone has already spoken for you, okay, so that we can go along. Because to hear the same thing over and over is rather redundant, we get the point, okay?
Yes, and Jan says that every meeting, in every meeting, we get a lot of representation. And we want to listen and we're here to listen. But it's the same, that we don't want to be nodding off, you don't want us nodding off. So believe me, we're listening.
All right. So I'm going to start first with Jerry Rounds. Jerry Rounds, thank you. And you have, so let me just explain, you have three minutes, all right, it's on the timer. Please keep it to the three minutes so that we don't have to cut you off, okay? Thank you, Jerry, go ahead.
I'll try.
Please do.
So my name is Jerry Rounds. I've been in the community for 30 years. I didn't go to school here and I don't have kids, but, and I'm not even sure if I'm in the right form for maybe, anyway, here we go. My concern is the quality of education, and I just have questions about that. I saw some of the data presented and like 80 history, I mean, liberal cycle, but a 80% achievement rate. I'm kind of curious, what is taught? So, and you know, one is to hear stories in the news and whatever about the quality of education, what's going on in schools, and I'm curious about that and I'd like to find out more about that. But just in my own experience, I got a copy of the American Action, which I believe is basically what he was here. And so, from this day, I thought I'd read about the plums and see what they had to say. Starting off, talks about the healing of the continent and everything seems fine. And then as soon as the Europeans entered, the advocates start turning negative. And I believe, and I look further into the book, I get the idea that the officers don't like this country. And young minds are great at absorbing data and, and that's a wonderful, awesome thing. But I think that people should feel good about themselves and their families and their country. And I don't see that happening with a book like this, with such a text. I don't see how you can have a unified construct of citizenship with such a foundation in history. Who chooses these books? Are there alternatives? And how does one find out what's really being taught in their classes? Are there answers to those things?
Okay, I'm just for clarification, in public comment, we listen to the comments or we do not respond?
So no hints at the voice to talk to. You? I'm sorry.
Please feel free to schedule a meeting with my own.
Okay, I would, thank you very much, that's, that's my.
Christine Michael? Can we turn up the microphone, it's perfect here? I think if you adjust the microphone, Christine, Christine, you adjust the microphone. There you go. Testing one, two, three.
Hello, school board members and Valley residents. Let's stop and think for a moment about life events that can change your life forever. Some examples include moving to a foreign land, getting injured in a car accident, getting a divorce, or losing your home in a fire. But the absolute worst thing that can happen to anybody would be to lose their child. The following is data from openbears.com, a CDC website to collect vaccine injuries and deaths. Case number 1845034, 15-year-old boy found unconscious and died one day after getting the shot. Case number 124573, 15-year-old girl died of heart failure the next day after the Pfizer shot. Case number 1845662, 18-year-old boy dies three days after the shot due to myocarditis, which is a serious heart inflammation. Those who survive have little, have a life expectancy of only five years without a heart transplant. Coincidence? Case number 1498080, 15-year-old boy collapsed and died on the soccer field four days after the Pfizer shot. Coincidence? Case number 1431289, 13-year-old boy dies with a brain hemorrhage 17 days after the shot. In the UK, children are dying at a rate 62% higher than the average. Thousands of people are dying and also reporting injuries such as neurological disorders, seizures, and fertility issues, but even worse, paralysis. 30,000 people are now disabled. More than 18,000 are dead. In Europe, almost 30,000 have died and almost 3 million people are injured from the shot. Coincidence? Because the shot lowers immunity, cancers, autoimmune disorders and diseases are expected to explode. Our children's lives are at stake here. It's up to you to do the right thing. It's up to you to make the best decision. Those children who die.
Wrap it up, please.
Those children who die leave grieving parents. Even one child dead is too many. I'm asking the board to create a resolution to oppose enforcement of any COVID-19 vaccine requirement to attend school in person.
Good evening, board members. Hello, everyone. Hi, this is a little change of pace here. I've written a poem about our beloved Dr. Fauci. F is for Fauci, who is fake, a fraud, a fear mongerer, a face mask flip-flopper, a fat liar in front of Congress, and is financially responsible for the creation and funding of a messenger RNA therapeutic gene-altering bioweapon, better known as the COVID vaccine. He's fundamentally crazy, a fighter of the truth, not for the truth. He's federally beholden to big pharma and big tech. He's a frontman for the mainstream media. He's a federal mouthpiece for the WHO, CDC, and FDA, not to mention the World Economic Forum. He's a fast forwarder to fascism. He has falsely accused the unvaccinated for spreading disease and unjustifiably have had to fire from their jobs. He's famously infamous and frankly unscrupulous. He's a false supplier of false negatives, he's a false buyer of false positives. He's federally responsible for crimes against humanity and federally responsible for funneling billions of taxpayer dollars to fraudulent scientific corporations. He's financially set and fundamentally bankrupt. He's a failure at the inversion of good. And finally, he's forgiven to free the souls of all those who carry the heavy burden of hatred for this man and his dirty deeds. We may choose to forgive, but we will never forget. So I ask you, members of the SYV School Board, why aren't you even considering obeying these mandate orders handed down from psychopaths to other psychopaths and eventually to Fauci and then our governor and then the public health department and finally to you? If you mandate this injection for children and you have no idea of its contents or its purpose, and please don't tell me it's for their health, then you haven't done your homework and you have not provided the proper information for informed consent. This makes you no different than Fauci. In the end, if you mandate the synthetic gene-altering spike protein with a proion to be injected into the arms of all your students, those injected students will never be themselves again. Your decision on this mandate will affect more than just your students, it may also affect future attendance and funding at your school. Parents who I know who are homeschooling right now have no intention of returning their kids to a school that would enact such a policy and that would mandate an unsafe, untested, fatally flawed gene therapy drug with disastrous side effects, including death, for a disease that poses zero risk to people under 20. Thank you.
I'm going to ask, it's fine to cheer, okay, but let's be civil. Thank you. All right, Sam Kaiser?
Perhaps if people agree with the speaker, you can just stand rather than clapping.
Good evening, my name is Sam Kaiser, I'm a pastor at Crossroads Church here in Valley. And on behalf of the families that attend our church and are part of our ministry, I'm here to maybe encourage you. I want you to know, I'm praying for you and I will continue to pray for you. You have a difficult job and I would thank you for serving our community. But I would ask this, whatever decision you make on the vaccine and the mandate, you may be tempted to say, well, we have students' best interest in mind. And I would ask you to rhetorically ask yourself, when have you always had your best interest in mind, me included? There are times when we make decisions as individuals that are detrimental to our life. We make mistakes and that's because we don't know everything and we don't have an infallible perspective. And I would ask you to consider your fallibility. I would ask you to consider the scope of your authority when it comes to telling another human being or families what they can do with their own lives. They're sovereign individuals and they're able to make choices. And so I'd ask you to prayerfully and thoughtfully consider your role and the scope of your perspective and to defer that decision, although you may feel that you may have their best interest in mind, that it's impossible for you to know what will happen in each individual case. You're going to hear statistics and you're going to hear people say things. And I thought, maybe I could bring some of those, but I was praying today and I thought, maybe I could just speak to your heart for a moment and say, just ask yourself as an individual, as a parent, a parent for children. And I hope that I have the best interest in mind, that I don't know everything. Just as your principal said when it came to education, sometimes we try to put a square peg in a round hole. And as you saw statistics on the board, you realize that every student is different. And if you're willing to consider that academically, how could you not consider that physically? How could you not consider that when it comes to each individual having the medical right to choose as a family what should happen with their own lives? And so I would prayerfully ask for you, you to consider the scope of your authority and the ability to tell another human being what they're to do with their lives and the scope of your perspective and consider your own fallibility. Know that I'm praying for you, I know that these people are cheering you on, you are and they support you. Thank you for your time.
Pauline Berani? Holly Berani.
Holly, I understand that you're reading a statement from Peggy Ivy. That's correct?
Correct.
Good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly. I'm writing for Peggy Ivy. She's a local here, lives across the street, San Antonio, Auburn. So to the SYD High School Board members, my name is Peggy Ivy and although I no longer have children in your school, my tax dollars continue to support you and your high school students. I want to thank you for your service and trust that your dedication to your oath upon accepting this position was honest and genuine. I am deeply concerned and strongly oppose the vaccine and mask mandates for students. I offer my research for your consideration. First, there is no vaccine for COVID-19 and it is not listed as such on the CDC's website. COVID-19 is not a natural occurring virus, but something that was created in a lab and patented by Bill Gates and Dr. Fauci. There is no FDA approval. Yes, Pfizer filed for approval, but the 14-day requirement for them to provide the list of ingredients passed without them submitting. What you want to mandate for our children is Pfizer's bio-intex experimental messenger RNA and RNA, BNT16262 biologic for COVID-19. This is gene therapy and not a vaccine. Every animal experiment by Moderna, Pfizer, et cetera, was stopped because they won't die. In 2008, Dr. Fauci published a paper on wearing masks during the Spanish Flu and concluded that wearing the mask resulted in more deaths due to bacteria pneumonia. On November 16th, 1918, and that's 1918, the Santa Barbara Daily News and the Independent both shared the following headline that read, "Mask is chief ally of flu physicians," the flu physicians declare. "Average person doesn't know how to take care of a mask and it becomes a virulent bacteria incubator." The surgeon protocol during surgery is that if the surgery proceeds longer than two hours, the masks must be changed. This is due to bacteria that accumulates when wearing the masks too long. Yet you are considering mandating that the students and staff wear them all day. Several countries and states have completely dropped the vax rollout due to deaths and complications. And when you support unlawful mandates, you are in direct violation of the 1947 North Burden Code as it is bringing harm to public. I want you to understand that you will be held personally responsible for your action and I pray that you will do what you know in your heart is the right thing to do. Respectfully submitted, Peggy J. Ivy. We also think that you may not have information and we downloaded some things that I want to hand out because I want you to, there's only six copies there, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Diane Mazer.
I'm Diane Mazer, the mother of a former graduate of this high school and now a concerned citizen and taxpayer. I am vehemently opposed to a COVID-19 vaccine mandate that encroaches on the parental rights. It is also illegal. It is the sole responsibility of parents to decide what is in the best interest of their children's health and well-being, which encompasses their religious convictions without government interference and harassment. Further, there is no legal authority that compels the proposed mandate. A mandate is not law. The California Assembly and Senate have not passed any law demanding the vaccination of children or adults for that matter because they know it's unconstitutional. It flies in the face of the freedoms that are guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution, Constitution of California, Title III of the U.S. Civil Rights Act, which protects discrimination in the case of the unvaccinated, and last but not least, the North Burden Code. They know that a lawsuit against this illegal action would eventually make its way up the steps to the Supreme Court. But one aspect of this debacle I hope is not lost on you as a board and as individuals, and that is the liability each one of you accepts if you put your imprimatur on this mandate. Should a student become ill, injured, disabled, or die as a result of being forced to take an unapproved experimental gene therapy drug, you are financially liable. There are lawsuits being filed in this country and internationally as we speak. I don't know if you realize that. One case in point is the $200 million lawsuit filed against the six members of the Clark County Nevada School Board in October of this year by a frustrated parent. Each member was served during the dad's speech to a very bewildered board. He told them they were not doctors, not nurses, and should not be acting part, but uphold their duty as educators. Your duty as our elected school board is to see that students graduate fortified with the best education this school has to offer in order to meet the challenges of today's world. That in itself is a tall order without going beyond what you were elected to do as a board. So please leave the medical decisions to the parents where it rightfully belongs as guaranteed by our God-given freedoms.
My name is Laurie Kennedy. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. I come to you on behalf of our community, Mama and Papa Bears, Grandma and Grandpa Bears. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members of the board, for your incredible dedication. I give a shout out to Mrs. Babcock, who taught my children how to critically think, how to love literature, and love to write. And now I see my grandchildren taking those tools as my daughter homeschools her children in literature and critical thinking. I come to you tonight as a member of the legal community and as others of my associates have shared with you, we are seeing more and more as the vaccine injuries and deaths occur. There's a court filing here and a court filing there and we are beginning to see the legal ramifications of what has happened when the mandate has been enforced. Just today I was sent a case in the UK where a headmaster was being sued for two vaccine injury deaths. I am actually very concerned for all of you and I share Pastor Kaiser's feelings about our prayers over you, that we will pray that you receive wisdom from God over your decisions. There's a great scripture in the Book of Isaiah. It says, "Come, let us reason together." And I pray, my prayer is that you will reason this out with God's help. So one of the things that the international community of lawyers is beginning to quote is the North Burden Code of Ethics. They are also quoting the Helsinki Declaration, which is the human rights of every individual combined with the medical ethics of our medical community, our political community, and your board. And so I thought tonight it would be important to read the first code. For those of you that are historians, love history, you will probably have heard this This is what it says, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise pre-power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior form of constraint or coercion." And I'll leave it at that because my time is up. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we are praying for you to make the right decision for our children and our grandchildren.
Thank you. Karen Miller.
Because some of what they do already talk to our audience. Thank you for letting me speak. My doctor, Karen Miller.
Karen, we're calling you in the microphone.
I'm Dr. Karen Miller and I say no to vaccine mandates for several reasons. Number one, children who get the COVID virus, they usually have mild symptoms and then recover quickly. Number two, if there is something to mitigate or cause recovery from a virus from the government's standards, there's no reason to get a, to make a vaccine. And this is the case for COVID. There's many different things that we see cause recovery, including supplements like curcata, vitamin D, selenium, vitamin C, and others. And there's also medications like ivermectin and E C Q. Number three, we talked about it already, but vaccine reactions to the so-called COVID vaccine is not safe enough. Nor has it been FDA approved. We've talked about that. I did see a recent comparison of the virus or the, on the bears, the flu vaccine versus the COVID vaccine. And in the 20, what is it, 25 years, the flu vaccine, the adverse reactions are around over 193,000. And with, and this is only like 1% they're saying for the, that's being reported. And for the COVID vaccine, there's around 800, 818,000 adverse reactions. And as far as deaths go on the flu vaccine, there's about 2,000 over 25 years. But already with the COVID vaccine, there is over 17,000, and this is just 1% that they're saying is being reported. So I would ask you guys to please prayerfully, as you've been asked, to think about this and don't play Russian roulette with these children. Think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Julianne Clark.
I am a graduate from the high school. My mother, who's 97, graduated from the high school and my five children graduated from the high school. So I care about our students and our school. First of all, I want to thank you for having the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of this meeting. It's very important that we do that and it sweeps to this issue. I'd like to thank all of you for your service. This is not an easy position for any of you to be in. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. But I'm here to ask you to prayerfully consider this issue. All of us are here just to work together. We want to make this work for people who want to take the vaccine and who don't want to take the vaccine so that everybody can feel safe and secure. And it's our constitutional right and legal right to have a choice. And that's, I think, what we're all here for, so to talk about choice, we should have a choice. And when you took your oath of office, your oath, I checked on this today to find out if it was correct, was to uphold the Constitution of the United States, which means you took responsibility to stand up for all of us in the community and our students to make sure our rights are preserved and taken care of. So please, we can consider this. Let's work together. Let's make the people that are concerned about taking the vaccine feel comfortable and those that don't, and work together and make rules and make it work for everyone because it's our right to choose. That's the most basic thing we're talking about here, is our right to choose and it must be preserved and protected. And I really appreciate you considering this and again, please pray about your decisions because we're all praying for you and the whole community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Merrill.
Hi, I have a junior now, who's a senior now, Sam, that attends a high school here. And I was trying to figure out what I wanted to share tonight and so I had started collecting my facts and it came to me that most likely people who are for the vaccine and people who are against the vaccine are not going to have the same news source or, you know, we're not going to have the same, totally lost my train of thought, I should just read We're not going to have the same truth, what's our, what's our foundation. We're getting so much information from different places and so my, my plea is just, is it possible for us to step back, take a deep breath, and be patient and let's, let's just wait out maybe just a school year before we make a decision to uphold enforcement. Let's see if there's more information that comes out on, on the vaccine before we make it, then absolutely for the kids. I wish we could do that for teenagers as well, but right now, the kids, you know, is the fire in front of us. And I feel like the Valley is, is unique where, you know, already this, our school made the decision to come back to school while other, you know, Santa Barbara waited. And I feel like maybe could we be unique again? Could we be unique and just say, we're going to wait, we're going to be patient and we're going to protect our kids right now and we're going to sit back and we're just going to say, hey, let's put a hole in this and let's just make sure that this is a safe thing for them. Let's just wave the white flag and say, let's put a pause in this. So that's my plea and I know you guys are in a really rough position and thank you for being there and being willing to meet and have these conversations on our behalf. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Diane Mazer.
Thank you all for this evening. Growing up, it was instilled in me by my elders that we are the caretakers of this planet and we are the caretakers of our children. That is the purpose of people on this earth. In every action you take, you must think how it will affect the next seven generations to come. This is a way to ensure we act with purpose for those who are not here yet and not to act with clouded judgment of the chaos of here and now. When we create a plan, we again must draw upon the sacred number of seven and look to the past, drawing upon the lessons left to us by our previous seven generations. I look at that painting right there and I can see how many people would say, there's an ill man who is being helped. I see it as there is an ill man because he was forced into slavery and lost his freedoms. I see it as there is an ill man because he was forced into slavery and lost his freedoms. My ancestors who are buried down the street at that mission will tell you, they could speak to you right now, how imperative it is to maintain freedoms for all over mind, body, and soul. Children are two times more likely to be harmed by the jab than COVID. That is not my opinion, that is from the data provided by VAERS and the CDC. This is just using data from immediate and soon-after reactions. It does not account for long-term effects, which we have no data on and may not know for years or generations to come. In front of you, you have the data from VAERS with the reactions reported in October for children ages 12 to 16. According to VAERS, the bone report, only 1% to 10% of injuries are ever reported. Where there is a risk, there must be a choice. So now we are faced with an important moral question that will lead to consequences for generations to come. Who has the authority to determine what is right for each individual child? Who will protect our children and their freedom over their bodies? According to Education Code, California Education Code, 35160.1A, school districts have the flexibility to create their own unique solutions. So I ask you, as caretakers of our children, and you as duty to our, as humans to our planet, to join school boards such as Happy Valley, La Serna Valley, Calaverdas, Cottonwood, Apple Valley, California Adventure Academy, Cap Boshano, Delhi, Durham, Helmet, McSwan, Mercer, Union High School, Newark, Voselia, West Placer, Wia Charter, Liddier, and many more to come this month, to create a board resolution to oppose COVID-19 vaccination requirements to attend school in person. Our children are counting on you to be brave and do the right thing for generations to come. Thank you for your passion and your courage.
At this point in time, we still have a few card speakers, et cetera. If there's anybody that would like to speak on this topic, who has something different to say, okay, I would appreciate you letting me know, otherwise, we're going to move on. Is there anybody who has something different? Kyle Abello, okay?
Madam President, Honorable Board Members and Staff, let me start by thanking you for your service to our students and community. I know from personal experience that being a board member isn't easy in the best of times, and you've been dealing with some of the most challenging issues to confront public education in our lifetimes. As a proud pirate, former high school board member, and parent to future pirates, I respectfully ask that you allow families to make their own medical decisions regarding COVID vaccines for their children without the threat of taking away their in-person education. Six months ago, when it was announced the district was allowing the public health department to hold a COVID vaccination on campus, there was a great outcry in our valley. The board received a lot of passionate letters, and thankfully, that decision was reconsidered. These same concerned citizens are before you today, your friends and neighbors, parents and grandparents, families who just want the best for their children. Why did that seemingly routine public health outreach arouse such consternation amongst your constituents, and how does it relate to this latest mandate? Is it because we oppose all vaccines? No, we're not rabid anti-vaxers, as some would like to dismiss anyone who questions the benefit of rushing a particular medical treatment for a very low-risk population. This is not the same as polio or any of the other childhood diseases that strike the young and for which vaccines have undergone decades-long testing and safety studies. Is it because we don't want anyone to have access to COVID vaccines? No, the shots are widely available at local pharmacies and other government sites for anyone who would choose to get them. And we believe families should have a choice to be free to make their own healthcare decisions. And why is it different for it at a school versus a pharmacy? And why is a school any different from an employer or retail establishment mandating COVID vaccination as a condition of entry? The difference is that public schools hold a unique place in our lives, our culture, and our republic. For most people, public school is the only viable option for educating their students, for their children. And we love our local schools, we love the high school. This school is the only institution that will touch nearly every life in the valley, and is the only institution where most people will have any meaningful interaction with our representative form of government, being able to personally address the elected officials who make decisions that will family-effect the lives of their most precious assets, their children. So when schools host a COVID vaccine clinic on campus or use their communication channels to announce it, they are really giving tacit support and encouragement to that activity in a very powerful way. So regardless of your personal views on the efficacy or desirability of the vaccine, school campuses are not the appropriate venue for medical care or medical mandates. Let me leave you with one last story. Some of you may know that my wife is from China, and in December of 2019, we were visiting her family in Wuhan. As the pandemic unfolded, we saw firsthand how an authoritarian government treats its citizens, from denial to panic to blame, and then to the mandates, restrictions on movement of certain groups, empowering local block leaders to denounce and report anyone who questions the government's actions, closing shops and markets for daring to serve customers on the wrong day or without sufficient masking, adopting cellphone apps to track and publicly shame anyone without digital proof of vaccination. We were so thankful when we were evacuated and able to return home to a country where individual liberty was respected and where our children could grow up in a free society. But I'm increasingly disturbed by what I see around me. Our community, state, and country are at crossroads, and the decisions that you and others make will determine our children's future. Please choose freedom.
Yes, ma'am?
May I want to speak?
Sure. And your name is?
Wendy Berry.
All right, Wendy, thank you.
I won't read everything, but good evening, board members. I'm here tonight, as you know, to urge you not to enforce the vaccine mandate. You don't want to hear redundancy, but you need to hear our voices, our voices of the parents of the kids that go to this school. The government of Mexico stated they will put off vaccinating otherwise healthy children until the COVID vaccine is proved to be safe for them. Proved to be safe. It's not proven yet. Don't mandate it for our kids. I leave you with a quote from a mother at a school board meeting in Chicago. Why do the protected need to be protected from the unprotected? By forcing the unprotected to use the protection that did not protect the protected in the first place. Please save our children. Do not enforce a vaccine mandate. You need to put the children first, like all the other schools that were mentioned earlier. Do not, I urge you, please do not enforce the vaccine mandate.
I don't see anybody else. Okay. All right. One more. I see your friend's name is?
Elizabeth Solder.
Raymond?
Elizabeth Solder. I have five sons. One is, it goes from 20 to seven years old. Elijah graduated from this high school, I have a senior and a freshman. And I just want to tell a personal story about what happened with the COVID shot in our family. My sister-in-law is a trainer, is an awesome trainer. She's in her 40s, and she got the shot in April. Two weeks later, she in the middle of the night died, and my brother had to bring her back to life. He's a boy scout, he used his boy scout skills. They called the ambulance, and they were, they put a heart monitor on her and said, okay, she must have something going on with her, but they never thought about the vaccine. Two weeks after that, the day before she was supposed to get the second shot, she was on the back of my brother's Harley coming down from Ojai, and on Rice Avenue, on the highway there, she whispered in his ear, pull over, and then faint. And she had a heart attack on the back of this Harley, and he had to hold her as he slowed down, and he gave her mouth-to-mouth, he did everything he could, and she was dead for 20 minutes. And luckily, she was, they have this special thing that they have at that hospital down there that was able to keep her heart going, but they did shock her three times, and they couldn't get her heart to get started, so it was always 20 minutes. Anyways, she was in hospital for two weeks in intensive care, and we kept asking, is the COVID vaccine, and the doctors would even discuss it, because it's the only reason why, why in the world? And they said, because she hasn't gotten the second shot, they cannot record it to VAERS. So that's my story about, on my personal thing. And so some people in the world, I know lots of people, said, I got the COVID shot and I'm fine. Sometimes people aren't fine. And that's when it comes to your own personal choice for yourself and your children, what you feel is right for yourself. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on now. One other speaker here, Magdalena Johnson.
I'm good.
You're good. All right, Magdalena, all right. Thank, yes. Name?
Madam Name, Pete Thompson.
Yes, Pete. All right.
I'm Pete Thompson. I'm a Florida resident, a pirate alumni. I have a daughter that's sophomore, and a son going to be a freshman next year. My wife Kristen was loved to be here, but she drew the wrong stick and got people watching her play basketball. So here I am. As we know, this is all about the kids. We know these four years that they're here are some of the most fortive years that they have. This is when they discover who they are, what they're going to be, and it's huge, you know, if this mask or this mandate goes through. There's a lot of families, including ours, that if they have the mandate of vaccine, go to the school or go homeschool. And I know there are a lot of pastors. Not only will it affect the kids, you know, socially and emotionally, it's going to affect the school in a big way. I don't want to make this a permanent solution to a timber rig problem. I'd like to, if our government asked us to stand on the bridge and jump off, would we? Would we all hold hands and jump? Or would there be somebody out there, there's plenty of them here, that would say, whoa, this maybe isn't such a good idea, maybe we should think about this a little bit? You know, the decisions that we make today, we can't go back. And we want to move forward with this thing, we want to be gone, of course, but like I said, any decision that we make now, can't go back. So please, really think about this. I know you are, because there's an awful lot of concerned people here, and this is just the tip of the iceberg of people that are here. I know we know a lot of people, and you know, just please, please, for our kids, this is probably the most important decision you might have ever made in your life regarding the future of our children. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody, and we will, we're going to move on now to ILD on the agenda, okay? So thank you very much. All right, ILD. Is the approval of consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Absolutely. Thank you, Tori. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. If they want. Excuse me? The consent agenda, there's, the consent, if you look at the agenda, it's about all the different items, okay? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Is there any discussion of any of the articles that we have discussed?
Yeah, two things more common than questions. Andrew and I traded a couple of emails that are related to financial reporting and budgeting, and specifically around the topic of zero-sum budgeting, or rather, more proactive budgeting at department level, at athletic department level, at sports level, and so forth. Right now, it's more just financial reporting as opposed to proactive budgeting at those micro-levels. So I just want to voice again that I would be a strong proponent of moving in the direction that we work on from a proactive budgeting perspective as opposed to reactive financial reporting. The other comment around consent agenda around personnel, it would be helpful to understand organizational charts in terms of whom everybody reports to, and who has authority over hiring at the individual levels, so that we can just make sure that, one, if we're meant to opine on an event to a tutor or certificate, certificate, substitute, or some other employee of a different department, that we have confidence that that review process has been done, that we can have very confidence that they're actually qualified to hold that position. So having a better understanding of board charts and hiring practices would be helpful.
Sorry for the noise outside. All right, sorry for the random comments regarding proposals. Okay, so Terri, this is a roll call, please.
Mrs. Conventure.
Aye.
Mrs. Bethcock.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Almberg.
Aye.
Terri, five years. Thank you. All right, so let's move on to item H, the action agenda. All right. And for item H2, I'd like to read a statement. This statement is from our, one of our attorneys, Marty Kong, with, with dealing with construction. All right. On, just to give you a better understanding, on December 18th, 2020, the board authorized the request for proposals for pre-construction and lease-leaseback services for the kitchen classroom modernization project. The RFP set forth the criteria based on qualifications and price, and the method in which the proposals were to be evaluated. The district received three proposals, and after scoring the proposals and interviewing the three firms, Deani Building Corporation received the highest score and therefore is the best value to the district. Deani Building Corporation was approved as the pre-construction and lease-leaseback contractor on March 9, 2021. The pre-construction services have been completed. Deani Building Corporation has received subcontractor bids, and the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, has been reviewed. Deani Building Corporation will complete the project for a GMP of $3,422,490. The GMP includes a contractor contingency in the amount of $151,815, and an errors and omissions contingency in the amount of $212,541. So that's just for clarification on pre-construction, right? And with that, we have item two, which is the approval of the resolution 2021-22-3, the guaranteed maximum price for the kitchen classroom modernization project, CTEFP. And so with that, Andrew, do you have anything you want to add to that at this point? Or Alicia? Thank you.
So as Jan Arney explained, the district chose to engage in what we call a lease-leaseback contract for this construction project. That lease-leaseback contract has already been awarded to Deani. What we're looking at tonight, not the What we're looking at tonight, not the contract going to Deani, but the approval of the guaranteed maximum price of that contract. So when Deani was originally awarded the contract, they were awarded the contract based on a number of items, but their projected amount or cost for the project was based on estimates. And they needed this time to do what was called pre-construction services, where they go out and they actually get firm bids from all the subcontractors and put all the numbers together. So what you see before you is the culmination of that pre-construction services done by Deani, where they went out, they went to all their subcontractors, they got bids for everything. They went through the whole entire bidding process, competitive bidding process, and put together a formal guaranteed maximum price. As part of the lease-leaseback construction contract, there are a number of legal requirements that must be met in order to ensure that the contract is legal. So you'll see in there $150,000 called out for financing. That is not in addition to the guaranteed maximum price that came to us when we met with Deani. It is just a portion of the guaranteed maximum price taken out and sliced a different way to ensure that all the legal requirements for a lease-leaseback contract to be considered legal and valid, there must actually be some sort of lease payment and those types of things. They pulled that amount out of the guaranteed maximum price and considered that the financing. You're not really financing anything. It's a nominal, nominal amount of financing strictly to meet certain legal ramifications and, you know, check boxes. So we have Pete from Deani here, if you guys have any questions. But what you see before you is the culmination of a competitive bidding process where Deani went out to local contractors and you didn't have any issues, our attorneys didn't have any issues, so.
Are there any questions? Do you want any questions for Pete?
Yeah, Pete, just.
Come on up, Pete.
Just a quick question. With the economy the way it is right now, this scarcity of items and inflation that seems to be going on in the country, how does that deal, how do you deal with that as far as this economy?
Well, you guys can reach, good evening, everybody. My name is Pete Hemsa. I'm with Deani Building Corp. So to answer your question, right now, we have subcontractor bids that cover all of the construction costs and presented in a guaranteed max price. So if you select or confirm our guaranteed maximum price, we're locking in those subcontractor numbers and beginning the procurement process so we don't have escalation and further price increases. So we've got a relationship with these subcontractors. As soon as we get in the green light, we get our contract with them essentially guaranteed at price.
So they're locked, they're able, once we go ahead, to lock in and, you know, purchase their products and get guaranteed that they'll have access? Because, you know, we hear these stories of, yeah, we couldn't get sinks for six months or nine months.
The lead time, it does take quite a bit of time to get some, we're logging these right now, but the price is guaranteed. And our protection is this is a 10-month project starting in December. So we're going to be on a short list with our contractors and our subcontractors to make sure those things that have the longest lead time are ordered first.
So the max price is guaranteed. What about the time? Is there, are there any guarantees?
The timeframe is stipulated in the contract as well.
Okay.
In addition to the guarantees made by locking in Deani and their subcontractors, there's also in the guaranteed maximum price contingencies, both for construction as well as errors and omissions. So in the event that something else would come up, it's already included as guaranteed maximum price.
Yeah, and this, wait, and this economy, that's one hell of a guarantee. So good luck. Thank you.
No surprises. Questions for Pete? All right, so before, thank you, Pete. Yeah, before, we have approval of resolution 2021-22-3, the guaranteed maximum price for the kitchen classroom modernization project. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve. I move that we approve resolution 2020/22-3, the guaranteed maximum price for the kitchen classroom modernization project. All right, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, Steve, I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, so roll call, please carry.
Mrs. Cullenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Aron.
Aye.
Mr. Olber.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. Thank you. And thank you, Pete, for hearing it. All right, we're going to move on to item I, the discussion. These items may recognize people and programs. We're not taking action on these items. We're just, as a board, discussing these items. We're going to go to item two, which is the educator effectiveness block grant plan.
Yes, thank you. So we have an opportunity for $240,000 of educator effectiveness block grant funding from the state. It requires a plan. He submitted at the end of December, so just like all the state funds have recently moved another plan. They did not specify a template or a process for this plan, so we're using the county provided template, and it's very basic. But these funds are meant to be used for educator effectiveness of professional development or mentoring and coaching. And so we've identified basically three buckets within the ten allowable criteria or areas. The first is coaching and mentoring, so staff and administrators, teachers. And so the other thing about this, the funds, is that they are available for this year and the next four years. So it's a multi-year, it's a multi-year ability for us to spend these dollars. So at a high level of the three buckets, again, coaching and mentoring, we've identified an amount of funds in $32,800 over the five years. And then the other bucket, in looking at an investment in the technology purchases that we've made this year around our one-on-one technology, is an investment in ed tech professional development for our staff as well. And so building an ed tech professional development program over the next four years with these funds. And then finally, the third bucket is around NTSS and PBIS and continuing the work that the district is doing around supporting our teachers and our students in that work around behavior support and tiered interventions. And so this provides funding through the next five years and our four years, initially this year as well. So all told, that adds up to $240,372. So we will bring this plan back in December for approval.
Certainly.
But this is just information item one. I don't think the discussion had any questions.
Questions, if they want?
Yeah, I wonder if you already have some initiatives. I hope that's better.
Yes.
I'm wondering if you already have identified initiatives towards professional development for the faculty and staff and then also the student component? And if you have, if there are, because this is a great.
Yeah, so I mean, currently, and this was here before I came, but so the work around PLCs that Michelle talked about in your presentation. So that's professional learning communities. We bring an outside professional development person to work with our teachers on. Basically forming communities of practice and teaching our teachers how to work collaboratively together and improve their teaching practice. And then the NTSS work that's been done, we have a consultant who's come in and worked, just recently worked with our counselors, but also done work previously with our other staff, administrators and administrators. And so that would continue, I can't see that continuing. There's also components of professional development built into the LCAP, goals around the LCAP. So this really is meant to support a lot of plans. But the one area we dealt around the LCAP was that education technology integration piece and how we technically utilize the one-on-one devices moving forward.
Any questions for that?
May I add one, one recommendation to consider?
Yes, please.
Both of the faculty and staff and also students, a mental health first aid class. There are, especially at this time, during these times, right? Both with the awareness education as far as the adults, really anyone who has conflict with children of any age can really benefit. And more so, our experienced students. And there are curriculum provided under the health of state and training that really educates young people on self-awareness, but also protecting health workers.
Yes, and that would fall into the NTSS, the NDS section of the plan. And it would be around training staff, they implement such a program based on the educator effectiveness plan specification.
Any questions, questions or comments? Okay, great, thanks. All right, we go on to item three, which is board policy updates. You have, we have first readings and there were a pile this time. And I just want to, I know you, Terry, thank you for your, my, it's a policy guide, but I call them. Sheet, sheets, okay, or quick notes if you will. That there are some in the 9,000s that pertain to, particularly to the board, terms of office, president, elections, et cetera. So please read through those carefully, objective materials, et cetera, and we will take action on them as we go. Okay, all right, all right, good. Let's move on then to item four, which is a vaccine mandate. This is a discussion item. There's no action taken tonight. And I just, Steve, you asked to put this title on the agenda. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify to our board that given the information that Andrew gave us in the board update on Friday, that vaccine mandate, we're, at this point in time, we're not anywhere near making any decision on any of this, et cetera. The soonest probably that the state would mandate, if you will, within July 1st, okay, 2022. So we have plenty of time to discuss and process, et cetera. But I'm going to turn it over to Steve, maybe that's the one I have this evening.
Yes, and I will, we've had enough discussion on this or input on it, so I will, I didn't plan to say a lot. And yes, we do have time, and maybe this will all be a moot point. And so I didn't, to avoid controversy, I know this topic has become very politicized and I want to avoid all that and just look at facts. And so I brought two charts from the CDC, and I think everyone would recognize the CDC, not Nuremberg or anywhere else, CDC. No?
I'm just going to have the reception.
Okay. I wanted to show this person and say something.
Can you just verify, you said you aren't deciding until July 2022? No, we're, the mandate, okay, I'm going to use this card hopefully. The mandate by the state, okay? Originally, they're targeting January 1, okay? Realistically, realistically, when you look at all the pieces to be put together, it would be more realistic to say until July 1, 2022. Okay, so that's why we have this, feel like we have some time. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, and if I understand this correctly, we, the governor has talked about mandating vaccine for the kids in the schools, but the schools have been given the option to enforce it. So that's what we're talking about, I think, whether we want to, and if it comes down to fight at some point, if we want to enforce it. Or like, you gave us the schools who chose not to enforce it.
I will, well, we're waiting to upload this. Not that we have the cart before the horse here, et cetera. I think it's just having the dialogue of what's out there. And, you know, we hear a lot of things, we read a lot of different things, et cetera. So we're just having a discussion. All right. No action. All right.
And the reason I brought it up is because obviously a lot of people have reached out, so.
I might recommend that as we have agenda items, that we think hard about how we, what verbiage we use on the agenda item so that we don't suggest or suggest a particular thing.
Sure. I know, seeing it as a discussion item, maybe we'll go with the. Okay.
Can you see that bottom line?
Sorry.
All right, so this is a chart from the CDC again. This is the death rate for everyone in the United States, a black line. And that starts April 2008 up until the most recent date of 1st November. And again, this is fact, so please don't mischaracterize this.
Sure.
I'm bringing my own material and I'm winging it. I'm not making this up. The black line is all Americans. And by the way, when I was looking this up, I mistakenly Googled flus, seasonal flus. This flu, this virus is mimicking most seasonal flus almost identically. On the bottom, you see a straight line. You should see a straight line that just deadlines right across the bottom. Is it showing up? It's in yellow. They goes along the x-axis all the way across. That, that is the age group 15 through 24 and 5 through 14 combined. So ages 5 through 24, that's the death rate. And yes, that's right. It's identical to the x-axis, which is close to zero. Okay, so that's, that's how it's affecting our youth from 5 to 24, kindergarten through college. That's the death rate in America by the CDC, from the CDC. So that next chart, please. Okay, yeah, that, the red line, that's senior citizens, okay? That's ages 65 and older. I think we can all agree that is the protected class. Sorry, did I? Should pick my words one carefully. Here, the dark blue line below that is ages 50 to 64, young Americans. That was it. And the light blue one is ages 18 to 49. Can you click on the 5 to 17? Everyone see that? That's what we're talking about, kindergarten through, you see it right there on the x-axis again? This is hospitalization, by the way. So we've talked about deaths and now we're talking about hospitalizations. How many are kids, kids are going to, how many kids are dying? Not many in the whole scheme of things. How many kids are even going to the hospital? There you go. Not many. Most kids, as another speaker said earlier, and I have four kids, it's gone to our family. Stay home, you stay for a couple of days, go back to your normal life. One of our kids totally asymptomatic. So this is what we see as parents. Thank you for doing that. And the last thing I want to say, just from a common sense standpoint, as parents, we're all parents here at this table. Most of you are parents. We're faced with door number one and door number two. Vaccine or no vaccine? No vaccine, what's, what's the consequences? As a, as a father, I say, what are the consequences? And the consequences, unless my child is immunocompromised. The odds are pretty good they'll get a flu and they'll stay home a couple of days and they'll be okay. What's behind the other door, door number one, vaccine? Not real sure, not 100% comfort level. A year ago, right a year ago, there were no vaccines out. They rushed the process, they put it through emergency approval, and they gave it to us. And now they've rushed, as they lowered the age, they've rushed that approval process as well. As a parent, as a father, I'm very nervous. Before, if I would have to stick that needle in my child's arm, I would be very nervous about what the results could be. Knowing, having a comfort level behind door number two, if, God forbid, they should get it, they'll be sick for a couple of days. This is what the facts from the CDC are telling me and many other parents. So if somebody says, and someone will, I'm just here for the immunocompromised, I am too. And if my child would, God forbid, be going through chemotherapy or some illness where their immune system is compromised, I would not put this on them and send them to a public school or private school. I would not. I feel like as a, as a concerned parent, I would be putting them in great harm. So I would probably be homeschooling. So I would probably be homeschooling. But because there's one thing we have also, last thing we know about this virus, if you get the vaccine, you can still get the virus. If you get the vaccine, you can still be a carrier. So these are the facts. That's where I think I'm coming, I know I, my wife and I come from as parents, and I think a lot of you other parents are too. Let's wait and see. Let's wait and see what Sacramento tells us. One last, last thing, there is this issue of somebody in Sacramento thinking they can be better parents than us, that we got this, we can, we can be a parent, better parent for your children than you can be. And we don't, I don't believe that. I, I think we can, as parents, we can, we can do that. Now, if you're saying it affects other people, again, the vaccine does not prevent it in people, for even, and if they wanna get, if other kids wanna get it, and we have friends who are giving their kids, last Friday, my daughter's nine-year-old friend got the vaccine, that's fine. That's fine, do work for them, and as a parent, they made the choice, that's fine. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, move on. So with that, now we'll move on to item J, board comments and correspondence. Are there any board comments and correspondence we see? Mr.? Okay, move on. I'll put item K, which is board matters. I want to remind everybody that our next regularly scheduled board meeting is December fourteenth, same time, same station, and then also make sure on your calendar that you guys December tenth, I believe it's four o'clock, to eight, which is our global setting with Andrew and our consultant. Looking forward to that. Make sure we can get, and then same time, reach out to each of us personally for information. And then that, I O L, which is adjournment?
Could I say something about? Yeah, the January eighteenth meeting?
January eighteenth.
I would like to propose being new, move that to four P M. if possible. My son is on the basketball team, I'm missing the first game tonight. They have a game that night against what's likely to be the rival of the league, so if it's possible to move it to earlier, so then I can drive to San Marcos afterwards, I appreciate it.
Is it the weekend?
Yeah, it's San Marcos. My understanding is that that night, we have the, not survey or-
The demographics for this.
Right, so, so moving it to a different day would be challenging, so that's why I hope, hopefully, to do it or just earlier.
I believe we, I believe earlier will work with that. Then will we bring you the dates for next period of the December?
Sorry to jump ahead. I was just looking at the schedule.
It's, it's good to know, we'll definitely check with you tomorrow.
Okay, who wants to move on now? Okay, six, four, start.
I have something to say. Yes, this is my board members, time to speak, sorry. I will speak with Michelle, we're just to speed. Okay, because this is prepared. We need to change the culture at this school to a-
Do you want to go back to board comments?
Board comments, sorry. To a culture that is more focused around students and less about protecting the system or the process. We need to listen to parents and stop treating them as the enemy. They are, in fact, our allies. They are the reason the school exists, for it is their children that are our students. We have a toxic, it's toxic system currently in place that does not need, that does need to be torn down, does not need to be torn down brick by brick, instead it needs to be blown up and start over, and it needs to happen immediately. Preferably six months ago with the addition of this new superintendent. The past practice of shutting down parents, ignoring their concerns, and ultimately turning the tables and demonizing the parents has to stop. Again, they are our allies and can only help make this school better. With the boys' basketball coaching situation, all I heard from leaders of the school is we cannot open Pandora's box and we let the parents get their way, they will go on, they will then go on to other coaches and other sports. What do we have to fear? Improving our coaches, therefore improving our students, that is exactly what we should be doing. Instead, all we have been talking about is protecting the process, protecting the process, which has been repeated ad nauseam lately. The process is wrong. The process is upside down. We need to get rid of this process and start a new one, one that puts the students first, one that takes the concerns of the parents seriously. I've recently been told by a board member over and over again that we're here to support the superintendent. Our support as board members, first and foremost, is to support the students, followed by the teachers and coaches and then the administration, but we do not have to pit one against the other. We can all work together in harmony if we choose. We have to stop setting people up to fail. Teachers are teaching subjects currently that they are not qualified to teach and nor credentialed to teach, and this is setting them up for failure. They fail our students, if they fail, our students fail. Hiring unqualified coaches is setting them up to fail. They fail our student, they fail, our student athletes fail. Having a new superintendent onboard, five months now, with no goals, is setting them up to fail. He fails, our school fails. I'm so thankful we have a meeting scheduled in December to give our superintendent goals. Andrew, I apologize that we are five months late. We need to keep the students, the focus. That should be the basis of all decisions, and we can't, cannot lose sight of that as board members, but we need to put the toxic culture of the past behind. And I've said this, I've done it three board meetings now, and we need to start moving forward. And hopefully with this meeting in December, we give you the goals and the direction to do that. Thank you very much.
All right, looking forward to our continued work to improve onward and upward. All right, so with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Thank you, Jose Juan. We have a motion and a second. We'll call, please, Terry. Mrs. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock?
Aye.
Mr. Luke?
Aye.
Mr. Alvaro?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.